Hey everybody, welcome back. We are in our James Bible study. Thank you so much for being here. It is an honor to be with you every Tuesday, Thursday night. I want to say thank you for studying the Word of God with me. Tonight's gonna be a power-packed message and lesson, so grab your Bible, grab your notes. If you need notes, go to our website, WhitestoneChurchTX.com. You can go to the Contact Us, send us your email, we will add you to our mailing list. Also, if you look on our archive Lessons, we have videos from the past plus notes from the past. And so tonight's notes should be there. You could print those out or look at them online, however you want to do that. But go to our website, WhitestoneChurchTX.com. If you haven't yet followed us or subscribed to our YouTube channel, it's under the same name, WhitestoneChurchTX. There are a couple different Whitestone Churches YouTube channels, so make sure you go to WhitestoneChurchTX. But we ask that you like us. We're trying to get a thousand subscribers so that we could simultaneously go live on YouTube and Facebook. And you have to have a thousand subscribers, so please go subscribe. Hey, God bless you. Thank you. Grab your Bible, James, Chapter 3, we're gonna start in verse 13. And we're gonna talk tonight about heavenly wisdom versus demonic wisdom. Wisdom that comes from God or wisdom that comes from the enemy. So let's get started, let's pray, and we will dive in. So Father God, we love you. God, we bless you. And God, we thank you for America. We thank you for this land, the home of the brave, the home of the free, land of the, how's that go? God, we thank you for America. I'm getting my tongue twisted. But we thank you on this Fourth of July weekend, God, that you are with us and you are for us. And so, God, we pray that we would honor you. And Lord, as we pray, God bless America. We want to pray right now, America bless God. America, let's bless God. Let's thank God for what he has done, what he is doing, and what he will do in our land, in our country. So Father, we love you and we bless you. In Jesus' name, amen. I think it's "home of the free, land of the brave," something like that. Yeah, I can't even, I need to, I gotta pull my foot out of my mouth. That's all right, at least I didn't ask any ladies today when their babies due and they're not pregnant. You know, that's, that's the worst one, so anything, anything less of that, I'm good. So James Chapter 3, verse 13. Listen to this. It says, "Who is wise and understanding among you? Let him show it by good conduct; that is, his works are done in the meekness of wisdom." Verse 14. "But if you have bitter envy and self-seeking in your heart, do not boast and lie against the truth." James Chapter 3, verse 13. "But if you have bitter envy..." So just on your paper, on your notes, put bitterness or envy or envious, jealousy, selfish, self-seeking. Listen, Cameron, if you're gonna do something, show your faith in God. James has just got through talking to us about our, our faith versus our works. That if we just say we love God, if we just have faith in God, but we don't have works to back it up, then our faith is dead. And we don't want dead faith. We want a live faith. We want to be movers and shakers for the Kingdom of God. And so James, in the second part here, in the second message in Chapter 3, he's saying, listen, when you go do good works, when you go do something, do it in meekness and do it in the wisdom that comes from humility, the wisdom that comes from God, knowing that it's not you and I that are doing the good works. Have you ever done something good and you wanted everybody to know it? You ever done something good and you wanted to make sure you got credit for it? You ever done something good? Maybe it was writing a check for that missionary and donating with the, the car payment that they needed, or the money they were raising to support and build an orphanage. And so you wrote a sizable check, but you just kinda needed everybody to know it. You know what I'm talking about. You ever cooked that meal or met that need or helped that little old lady across the street? And you just needed to make sure that the preacher knew it, or the Sunday School class knew it, or your friends at church knew that you did this good thing. Paul, James is saying, hey, look, man, that's not done in meekness and humility. That's done with pride and envy and self-seeking, selfishness, bitterness of heart. So when you go do something good, when you put your faith into action, you don't need to seek glory and credit for it here on earth, or destroys that which you did because your heart was in the wrong place for doing it. Have you ever gone to church because it's the right thing versus gone to church because you wanted to worship God? It's a good example. Verse 15. "This wisdom..." So write down wisdom, because we're gonna dive into this wisdom. It's gonna get deep tonight. "This wisdom does not descend, come down from heaven or above, but it's earthly, it's sensual, where we could taste, touch, see, feel, smell, what we can absorb with our senses. It's fleshly and/or it's demonic. Wisdom that doesn't come from above is either wisdom of the earth, wisdom of the flesh, or wisdom of the pit of hell." So there's different types of wisdom. And God's saying, hey, listen, my wisdom descends from heaven. And here's proof that you know that you're tapping into or hearing the wisdom from heaven. It says, "For where envy and self-seeking exists, Cameron, confusion and every evil thing are there. But the wisdom that is from above is first pure, peaceable, gentle, willing to yield, full of mercy, good fruits without partiality and without hypocrisy. Now the fruit of righteousness is sown in peace by those who make peace." So God is saying through the book of James, hey, listen, there's earthly wisdom, there's fleshly wisdom, there's demonic wisdom. And that wisdom is gonna drive your actions. So write that down. Wisdom will drive your actions. Wisdom has got to be received from God. So James has talked a lot about wisdom. In James Chapter 1, he says, hey, listen, do you need wisdom on how to raise your children? Do you need wisdom on how to work better at that job? Do you need wisdom on how to pass that test? Do you need wisdom on how to respond to people? Do you need wisdom on how to react to a COVID world or a world that looks like it's falling apart? Do you need wisdom? Because wisdom will be proof or fruit of your maturity. Now, listen, Cameron, if you need wisdom, just ask of God who will give wisdom. Hey, Cameron, in 2 Corinthians Chapter 12, wisdom is a gift of the Spirit. Wisdom is a supernatural gift like tongues, like laying on a hands, like prophecy. Wisdom comes from God. So write that down. Real wisdom or truth wisdom or wisdom that will last forever, eternal wisdom comes from God. So let's dig into this, these three levels. I want to remind you that sin, there's three levels to sin. There's sin, there's transgression, there's iniquity. So sin itself is this first level of, oh, I missed the mark. It's an archer's term, that archer pulls back, he's trying to hit the bullseye. He's trying to do what he knows he's supposed to do, but he just, he's off course a little bit. Sin, in its first stage, is, for example, you're driving down the street, you're trying to follow God, you're doing your best, somebody cuts you off, you, you cuss them out. Or you give them the finger. And you go, oh, God, I used to do that all the time. Why did I do that again? I haven't done that in years. God forgive me, I repent. See, that's sin. Sin is not intentional. The first level of sin is just, I'm trying to hit the mark. My wife says something and I'm trying to respond in love, but I respond in, in rudeness or anger. Oh, honey, I'm so sorry. That's sin. Transgression is choosing to trespass. Transgression is when we say things like, man, tonight, I'm gonna get wasted. I can't wait till five o'clock. I'm gonna go tear it up at the bar. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna get loaded tonight. I deserve it. It's Fourth of July weekend. I'm gonna get hammered. Well, that's intentional trespass. That, that means I know there's a line and I'm intentionally gonna cross it. For example, man, the next time I see that guy, I'm gonna let him have it. I'm just gonna chew him out. I'm gonna tell him what a jerk he is. And boy, he better not ever do me that way again. That's intentional sin. That's trespass. Jesus was wounded for our transgressions and bruised for our iniquity. Iniquity is that third level of sin where it becomes our identity. It becomes who we are. It overtakes us. God is saying, hey, listen, as there's three levels of sin, there's three levels of wisdom that comes from the enemy. Cameron, the first level is earthly wisdom. Listen, we think that old people are just naturally wise. Now, there is some truth to that. The longer we live, most likely we've learned from our mistakes and most likely we have done plenty of trial and error. And most likely, we're a little bit wiser as a 65-year-old than versus a 15-year-old. Now, there is earthly wisdom. And I'm not saying it's on the surface bad. But there's earthly wisdom that competes against God's wisdom. What do I mean by that? Earthly wisdom says, from our, from our institutions of education, from our, from our school systems and higher education, earthly wisdom battles godly wisdom in the realm, it's an easy one to say, in evolution versus creation. Earthly wisdom from our most prestigious universities say that God did not create the world, that we came from the Big Bang, that we evolved out of a cosmic soup and then we turned into goo and then it went to the zoo and now we got you. You know, it, it went through these stages of evolution over billions. That's earthly wisdom. Earthly wisdom would say, hey, listen, there's no God, so you need to make your own purpose, your own reason for living. You need to get all you can while you can, because this is your only time around. And when you die, we hope you had a good ride. I mean, I hope, hope you got off well, but you know, that's earthly wisdom. Earthly wisdom competes with heavenly wisdom. Now, because we're human beings, we're gonna, we're gonna get some wisdom that would come from God, but it's gonna be mixed with earthly wisdom. So if we're only trusting in what the earth can tell us. On downtown campus on UT, it says, "The truth shall, the truth shall set you free." And that's posted up on UT's wall. It says, "The truth shall set you free." Now, that's a Bible verse, but they are leaving out that Jesus is the truth. So truth, when it doesn't come from God, is earthly wisdom. Now, the flesh, it says, there's earthly wisdom, there's sensual wisdom, there's earth, there's fleshly wisdom. Cameron might say, hey, if it feels good, it's gotta be right. If it feels good to my flesh, if I can taste it, if I can see it, if I can hear it, and it makes me feel good, then obviously it comes from God. Obviously, it's okay. Hey, listen, God created me to be happy. He wants me to enjoy life. And so if it feels good, I'm gonna do it. There's another type of sensual or fleshly wisdom that says, "I'll believe it when I can see it." If I can touch it, I'll trust it. If I can taste it, I'll believe it. If I can see it, if I can touch, feel it, taste it, if I can tangibly put my hands on it, I'll believe it. Now, that's fleshly or sensual wisdom. Jesus says, hey, listen, as believers, we believe in what we can't see. We trust God when we can't trace God. We acknowledge God when we don't understand God. Cameron, your flesh won't be able to comprehend the presence of God. Then the third level of wisdom that doesn't come from God is demonic wisdom. There is demonic wisdom that comes from the pit of hell. I want you just to go to the realm of horror movies from Hollywood with me. Horror movies that started off in the 30s and the 40s with Frankenstein were scary. Horror movies today are demonic. They're evil. You don't just have Frankenstein the monster scaring people. You don't just have these scary movies. We now have evil movies. There is demonic spirits that teach people how to sin. They give people wisdom on how to torture. They give people wisdom on how to hurt and abuse. They give wisdom that comes from hell and it is downloaded directly to people through different mediums and different sources, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Now, if that scares you or that makes your eyebrows furrow a little bit, go, demons can't talk to us and none of... Fallen angels and Satan himself has been teaching mankind how to war, how to, how to do witchcraft, how to conjure up spells and spirits, how to have demonic wisdom. This is not just a play on words. This means demonology. This means how to worship the devil. And so there's different realms of wisdom. So I want to go to 1 Corinthians Chapter 2, and we're gonna dig deep here. So I need you to stay with me and hold on to this, because I want us to see the medium of media. I want us to see the media impact on our lives. Dr. Miles Monroe, I brought his name up the other day. Miles Monroe does a great message. It's about an hour and a half long. You can find it on YouTube. It's miles, M-Y-L-E-S, Monroe, M-U-N-R-O-E. He's from the Bahamas. He passed away actually about four or five years ago. The amazing thing, the message that, it's called the mandate of media, I want to say, came out like in 1998. And it is so prevalent to 2020, it's scary. You might think, if you didn't see the way they were dressed and the video quality, you might think you preached it yesterday. It's amazing. But it's called the media mandate, and, and it's really rocked me. My friend Rhonda shared it with me. It's really made me go, oh my God, I've seen it, but I haven't put it together quite as well as he's put it together. So check this out, 1 Corinthians Chapter 2. Let's talk about wisdom for a minute. And I want to challenge you on, on a belief. I want to challenge you on this. Most of you living, which, most of you watching, most of you living, most of us living who are watching this would say, hey, Cameron, I don't believe in evolution. I believe in creation. Now, you may have some real mixed messages and mixed understanding. But most of us would say, okay, I believe God made me. I don't believe I came from a monkey and I just came from stardust. I don't believe that two galaxies collided and stardust happened and here I am. I, I, I think most of you watching wouldn't believe that. If, if you do, I want to just encourage you to read Genesis Chapter 1. But most of us have evolution wisdom. Most of us will say things like this, well, mankind started dumb and we are much more intelligent today in 2020 than we were in 1850, than we were in, in the year 400, and we definitely are smarter than when the cavemen walked the earth. Well, we get that wisdom, that knowledge, that understanding, because we've been taught in almost all forms of media that we have evolved over billions and billions of years. You cannot watch hardly anything, movies, documentary, textbooks. You, you just can, you can barely escape when we talk about the history of the world, that the world, billions and billions of years are gonna be thrown in there. So most of us have this mindset that we started dumb and we're ending intelligent. But I want to challenge that wisdom with what the Bible says. The Bible says, "We started perfect." Adam and Eve were the most intelligent beings to ever walk the earth. Adam and Eve's DNA was impenetr, was, was, would never die. Adam and Eve's ability to comprehend and process information was far beyond our ability today. What corrupted their DNA, what corrupted their perfectness, perfect in their ability to live forever, was sin, when they ate the fruit. So every generation after Adam and Eve, their children were a little less than them. The, I like to say, the toner and the copier started to run out of ink. Pre-sin, the toner would always be filled. You'd get perfect copies. But Cain and Abel, if mom and dad were 100%, after sin, mom and dad are, are deteriorating in all levels. Mom and dad produced Cain and Abel, they're, they're produced at 99.9%. And their kids at 99.8, 99.7. And you could see that all through history. Here's my point. There's wisdom that comes from the earth and there's wisdom that comes from our own being, our own will, and there's wisdom that comes from hell. When we think about the devil's wisdom, let's not give him more credit than he deserves. For example, Satan did not know when Jesus would be born. In the garden, when God says, Satan, you're gonna crawl in your belly, you're gonna eat the dust of the earth, the woman is gonna have a baby and that baby will destroy you. Genesis Chapter 3, verse 15, 16. Satan did not know that it would be 6,000 years later till Jesus was born. He didn't know he'd be born in Bethlehem. He didn't know his mama would be named Mary. He didn't know his dad would meet named Joseph. Why did Satan not know? Because he doesn't have God's wisdom. Satan knows the Bible, front to back. He's memorized every word of the Bible. He knows every Greek translation, every Hebrew root word, meaning. He knows every, every ounce of it. But he doesn't have wisdom to put it together. He doesn't have wisdom to comprehend it. You may be able to read a 40-page contract, government contract, but it takes a lawyer or a trained person in that to understand it. You may be able to read it, but you won't understand it. Satan can read it, but he doesn't have the wisdom to comprehend it. Satan did not have the wisdom to know nailing Jesus to the cross would strip him of his own authority. If he had, he wouldn't have done it. Satan doesn't know when Jesus will return. Satan does not have the wisdom of God. He has understanding, but he, he has demonic wisdom. He has earth wisdom, touch, taste, see and feel wisdom. That's the only level he can operate on. He cannot operate from heavenly wisdom. Let me prove it to you. 1 Corinthians Chapter 2. Paul is writing to this city called Corinth, and he's writing to these normal people, just like you and I. He says, "Brother," he's not talking to the world, he's talking to the believer. "When I came to you, did not, I did not come with excellence of speech or wisdom. I didn't come with great oratory skill and great PhD level. I didn't come to you as this great speaker or great wisdom of the world." Declaring to you the testimony of God, "For I determined not to know anything among you except Jesus Christ and Him crucified. I was with you in humility or meekness, in weakness, in fear and in much trembling, and my speech and my preaching were not with persuasive words of human wisdom." Have you ever heard somebody try to preach the Word of God out of human wisdom? It doesn't work. You, you, you smell it just like that. You're like, dude, this guy is boring. I can't stand this. All I'm getting is a bunch of human wisdom. If all you wanted was human wisdom, then you would be satisfied. Google would satisfy you. But there's something inside of you craving the wisdom of God, knowing that that wisdom supersedes our wisdom. Check this out. 1 Corinthians Chapter 2, verse 4. "My speech and preaching were not with persuasive words or human wisdom, but in demonstration of the Spirit and power, that your faith would not be in the wisdom of men, but in the power of God." Real quick example, again, evolution versus creation. God spoke and the world were. God spoke and the light separated from darkness. God spoke and the ocean stopped at this, this point. God spoke and trees formed. He spoke, dolphins formed. He spoke the world into existence. Now, our human wisdom can't comprehend that. It just can't. We, if we could comprehend it, we would know God. But since we can't comprehend it, we're not on the same wisdom level as God. So this is what this is saying. He says, God didn't just give us wisdom, but he spoke with power. His power created things. So the power of God is proof that God has superior wisdom. Because if we could figure out the power, because we could figure out the wisdom, then, then we wouldn't need God. So we want to clone people. We want to say, oh, we can make people, because we could be like God. We can't, because we don't have his power or his wisdom. Look, look at this. What tree did Adam and Eve eat from? Let's just, I keep going back. What tree did they eat from? They eat, they ate from the tree of the knowledge. So just start, stop right there. They didn't eat from the tree of life. They, they ate from the tree of knowledge of good and evil. They wanted information. They didn't necessarily want bad information. Eve says, oh, I could get more wisdom or more knowledge if I eat from this tree. God told them, back on me, I want to learn more good. See, when they ate from the tree of the, the wisdom, or the knowledge, the tree of the knowledge of good or evil, the enemy tricked us into believing that we could determine what was right or wrong. The enemy fooled us that we could determine what is good or evil. We can't understand good or evil without the wisdom of God. So the wisdom of God has got to give us understanding of what is good. Because we live in a day where good is called evil and evil is called good. We live in a day, we're experiencing right here, I'm not trying to get political, but we think it's evil to open businesses right now. And we think it's good to protest and loot and break into other people's businesses that are shut down. So, so on one hand, we're calling it good to protest by breaking windows and looting stores, and we call it bad for stores to open up for normal commerce. I mean, I just went political and I said I wouldn't. But, but we can't comprehend good and evil without the wisdom of God dissecting the knowledge that we have. Because if Cameron just has knowledge, I'll start to think that I can determine what is evil and what is holy. But God says, Cameron, without my wisdom, your information is useless. It's like this. A heart surgeon can have information and knowledge on how to brilliantly fix your heart with a five bypass, taking arteries out of your legs, working through microscopic tools, and he can crack your chest open and delic, he can have all the knowledge of heart surgery. But the same heart surgeon's out back smoking pow-mows after surgery, and he doesn't have wisdom. So, so I, I, I hope there's no heart surgeons listening, smoking pow-mows out back after heart surgery. But I'm just saying, you can have knowledge, but not be very wise. I do it all the time. I know what foods are good for me, but I don't put my wisdom into practice all the time and eat healthy. So God's really challenging me in that area. So, so we all do it, but we don't need more knowledge. We need the wisdom of God. So let's dive back into 1 Corinthians 2. Listen to verse 6. However, look at this, 1 Corinthians 2, 6. "However, we speak wisdom among those who are mature. Only mature believers will receive the wisdom of God." Why will only mature believers receive the wisdom of God? Because the wisdom of God will tell you that you're foolish. Hey, Cameron, it's foolish for you to punch that guy back in the face. Now, I know he just punched you, but it's foolish. You're not in danger anymore. He walked away. He's cussing at you. It's foolish for you to go up behind him and punch him in the head and get revenge. That's foolish. You know, it's gonna take great maturity and the Lord... You know, it's gonna take great maturity in the Lord for me to turn the other cheek. Hey Cameron, it would be foolish for you to type that email and push send. Well, God, I'm just defending myself and I'm gonna tell those people that I didn't do it and I'm gonna this. Cameron, it would be foolish to go on that social media platform and try to defend yourself, because they're not gonna believe anything you say, they're just gonna twist that email. So it is very wise for you to shut your mouth and let me protect you. Well, well, God, I gotta protect myself. See, so wisdom that comes from God is going to challenge us. It's gonna shut us down and make us be mature in the Lord, saying, okay, God, I trust your wisdom above my wisdom. However, we speak wisdom among those who are mature, not yet the wisdom of this age. Uh, I could talk about this for a long time, but, but the wisdom of this age, nor the rulers of this age, who are coming to nothing. There is a wisdom of this twenty-twenty age. There is a YouTube wisdom, there is a Facebook wisdom, there is a CNN wisdom, there is a Fox News wisdom, there is an ABC Broadcasting Channel wisdom, there is Hollywood wisdom, there's Nashville music wisdom, there are sports wisdom, there are education wisdom. There is wisdom of this age, fully accessible to all of us at any age, at any time via the internet. I really want you to think about that. The wisdom of this age, nor the rulers of this age. Now, those two references are very similar to Ephesians six, when it's talking about principalities and demonic spirits, uh, fallen angels in heavenly realms. The rules of this age, the principles of this age, the spirits of this age, listen. In the boardrooms of Hollywood producers, from television shows to to Broadway musicals, to the latest movie coming out, to the latest album being released by that musician. There is a boardroom of investors, editors and producers. Nothing gets on the screen or in the CD or in the play or in the movie without it intentionally being there. So there is a wisdom in that boardroom. There is a power in that boardroom. There is a knowledge that wants to be conveyed to our children, teenagers, married people, elderly people, to this world. There is a wisdom being portrayed in our television shows, our commercials, our media. All of our media platforms are full of a wisdom. And it's either wisdom that comes from above, or it's earthly wisdom, fleshly wisdom, or purely demonic wisdom. I really want you to think about that. What wisdom is there on shows that some of us have watched for ten years? That everybody on the show is sleeping with somebody that's not their wife or their spouse? Or they're not married to? What is the wisdom being portrayed? What's the knowledge, what's the, what are those producers, what's their agenda? Oh, they don't really think about it, they just put, no, 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 they think about it. They're pushing an envelope for a reason, we call it pushing the envelope. What, what is the agenda with nobody being married, but yet everybody's flesh being seen on the screen? What's the agenda? The agenda is against God's wisdom of marriage. One man, one woman, together forever, not lusting after other bodies, not uh, bringing other bodies into their bedroom, not bringing screenshots of other people doing things into their holy of holy place called the match, called the, called the, the sanctuary of the marriage, uh, of their intimacy. So what's the, what's the wisdom of of the movie producer? The wisdom is to say, hey, listen, nobody could live a lifestyle that the Bible, that God says is obtainable. We're just animals, we're just giving into animal instinct. Listen, there is no way possible for men to have self-control. Men are men, they're gonna do, boys will be boys, they're just gonna, listen, there is a wisdom of this age, and from the rulers of this age. That wisdom and those rulers are in direct competition with God the Father and His wisdom. However, we speak wisdom among those who are mature, yet not the wisdom of this age or the rulers of this age who are coming to nothing. Hey, listen, it's, it's okay to be a Christian and to get drunk, it's okay to go and just live like the world. God just wants us to blend into the world. Hey, listen, we're all got vices, we all got weak points, God understands it, he loves us anyways. Grace, 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 God's grace, and listen, you just be you, and when you die, God's gonna say, welcome home, honey, no consequences. See, there's an earthly wisdom even in religion. But it's in direct opposition. Second Corinthians, chapter ten, says to take every thought captive. Take every thought. Now, listen, before tonight's study, we talked about words, and we talked about actions. Words come from our thoughts, so write this down, thoughts express themselves through words. Thoughts come out through words. Please write this down, thoughts come out, and it's written down in here, I probably shouldn't say, you can read it in my notes. Thoughts become words. Women, you said to your husband, tell me what you're thinking, what are your thoughts? Kids, you tell your kids, what's going on in there, what are your thoughts? Verbalize your words. There's other times you verbalized, or or verbalize your thoughts. There's other times we verbalize our thoughts, we're like, oh, I wish I could get that back. Thoughts are verbalized through words. Words turn into actions. Words turn into actions. We say it before we do it. We think it, we verbalize it, we do it. Where does the thought come from? It comes from our heart. Where is our heart getting its information? Our soul is our mind, will and emotion, it's our heart, it's this inner being, this inner man and woman. And we are getting information from either earth's wisdom, our own wisdom, or the enemy's wisdom, or God's wisdom. And now that wisdom is gonna enter, enter our heart, and it's gonna produce thoughts, which produce words, which produce action. As a man thinketh in his heart, so is he. As a man thinketh in his heart, well, I'm thinking what my heart is producing. So if my heart is full of bitterness, what am I thinking about people who are uh, 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 madly in love? And I'm bitter because I'm, I got divorced and my, my spouse ran off with the, the neighbor and they ruined my life, and but I'm bitter and I haven't forgiven them. Well, I got bitterness in my heart, so when I see a young couple come up and they say, hey, we're gonna get married, I say something like, oh, it'll never last, marriages never last, he'll cheat on you, she'll cheat on you, good luck. And we say something that came from a thought that originated in our heart. If our heart has bitterness, our thoughts will be bitter, our words will be bitter, and then our actions will be bitter. If you've ever seen a bitter person, you can normally tell they're bitter by their vert- by their physicalness, their, their outward action. And then you really back it up when you hear them speak. And then when they speak enough, you start to grasp how they think. And then when you understand how you think, you realize how hurt or how bitter they are in their heart. And if we keep hanging around that bitter person, and we start to get our wisdom from that bitter heart or that bitter person, what do we slowly become? We become jaded or bitter ourselves. Have you ever hanged around, hanged around, have you ever hung around somebody long enough? You started to talk or act or laugh, or to move or to think like they do? Listen, there is a wisdom of the enemy that is trying to get your heart. So if your heart is jaded, hey, all marriages end in divorce, all kids are gonna rebel, all kids, all kids rebel, it's just normal. No, 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 it's not, it's just evil. Um, it's not normal. It's against God. See, when we start to be around and influenced long enough, it'll influence our heart and our heart will influence our thoughts, and our thoughts will influence our words, and our words will influence our actions. Do we see the progression? Verse seven, but we speak the wisdom of God in a mystery, the hidden wisdom which God ordained before the ages of the glory. First Corinthians, chapter two, verse seven. Listen to verse eight, it's a kicker verse. I, I, I didn't ever really read this verse till four or five years ago, I think it was in a Sunday School class that my friend Willie was teaching, and he read it and I thought, I gotta read that again, I don't understand it, I, and, and listen to what it says. I'm just gonna read six, seven and eight without interruption. Verse six, first Corinthians, chapter two, verse six. However, we speak wisdom among those who are mature. Not, yet, yet not the wisdom of this age, nor the rulers of this age who are coming to nothing. But we speak the mystery or the wisdom of God in a mystery, the hidden wisdom which God ordained before the ages of our glory, which none of the rulers of this age knew. For had they known, they would not have crucified the Lord of glory. There is wisdom that comes from God, and it's hidden. The world can't find it. Satan can't find it, our flesh can't find it. Hollywood can't find it, Nashville can't find it, Wall Street can't find it, Cameron can't find it. Satan himself cannot find the hidden wisdom of God. See, because if we could, verse eight says, which none of the rulers of this age, those rulers were spirits from hell, Satan himself, the Sanhedrin, which were religious men, Pilate, which is the Roman ruler, had the, had the rulers of this world or the rulers of the spiritual world, had they had the wisdom of God, they would have never crucified Jesus on the cross. Why? Because Pilate would have known that Jesus is the king of kings and Pilate would have bowed down and Pilate would have been saved, not burning in hell. Satan? Satan never would have crucified Jesus if he would have known that the second Jesus breathed his last breath, that the temple veil would be torn into, the spirit of God would start to be able to fill me and you, and Jesus at that moment went to hell, took the keys, took authority, did not just live a sin-free life, but he destroyed the power of death and hell, took away the punishment. If Satan had known that his nemesis, Jesus, would have destroyed him, he never would have crucified him. But yet Satan's wisdom says, if I can torture and slaughter this man named Jesus and put him in the grave, he'll be dead like everybody else and I'll still be the ruler of this age. But he's not wise enough to know the truth given in God's word. We're not wise enough, when we wanna go sleep with somebody that's not our spouse, we're not wise enough to say, you know what, I, my body is the temple, what does the temple of God have to do with a whore? What does the temple of God have to do with that guy at work that talks to me and writes me love letters and he knows I'm married? What does my holy temple have to do with that porn site at two AM? What is my holy body, my holy eyes, my holy ears, my holy mind? What has it got to do with the earthly wisdom that comes through that soap opera? Where nobody's married, they're all doing drugs, they're all cheating and lying and gossiping? What does this holy thing have to do with unholy gossip? If I could grasp that wisdom, then saying no to the dirty joke, saying no to the food that's unholy, unhealthy, saying no to the gossip, no to the lie, no to the drugs, sex, rock and roll, you fill in the blank. If I have the wisdom of God, I'll see right through that deception. And I'll say, that has no, no reason to live in my heart, because if it lives in my heart, it'll produce a thought. And that thought will produce a word, and that word will produce an action. See, see, um, I, I have like a million examples, but I'm not trying to isolate anybody listening, but, but for example, if you hang around with another guy that calls his wife the B-word, he, instead of a witch, he calls her the B-word. He goes, man, that bee, she don't, ah, she makes me so mad, or, you know, and, and he just uses that word. But what he's referring to his wife is, is a female dog. So his words are expressing a thought in his mind, and he, he may have been influenced by that rapper or that country musician or that actor who calls his wife the B-word or refers to women as female dogs, and, and that's just in those lyrics. That's just in the lyrics of that song. I mean, and I've memorized that song, I haven't memorized scripture, but I can memorize every word of that song. And so that song planted that thought in my mind that women are nothing more than female dogs. So that when that ex- that thought, that, that thing that came from a producer that had an agenda and said, I'm gonna put that in the song, because I have an agenda to twist the mindset of the people listening, and so that thought goes into my heart. And then my heart, it may be a half of one percent, it may not be ninety-eight percent, I may never beat my wife, but there's something inside that says, my wife is on the same level as a female dog. So when she makes me mad, I will produce the thought that says, she's nothing but a bee. You know what, I'm the king, she's the bee. She, she needs to do, how dare her inconvenience me right now? So then, all of a sudden, before we know it, I'm, I'm getting all ramped up, sorry, before we know it, we'll say the word, which will produce the action. The action will be her hearing it going, oh, I thought I was a queen, I didn't know I was just a dog. And all of a sudden, that action will get down into her heart, because it will change the process. See, that's how Satan does it. But we're buying the wisdom of the world. I'm gonna store up all my money, the wisdom of the world is work really hard, save up millions of dollars or whatever, 401K money, put it in the bank, and when you retire, it's your time, you deserved it, you earned it, get a RV, travel the world, it's all about you, 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 and God's going, no, 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 I gave you that, oh, oh my God, I gave you that two-hundred-thousand-dollar-a-year job, because I wanted you to save up eight-hundred-thousand dollars, so that when you did retire, you could buy the RV, but I want you to drive that check down to Mexico and build that half a million-dollar orphanage, I really didn't design you to play golf at every course in America for the rest of your life. That's just the wisdom of, man, Cameron, I gave you that for the wisdom of heaven, I got a bigger calling for you. But when we buy into the wisdom of the world, of our flesh, of the enemy, we'll reject the wisdom of God. See, here's what's gonna happen, and it's gonna happen to all of us, and, and I pray you're still with me tonight. We're gonna stand before God one day, and all of the things that we've done, he's gonna test him in the fire. He's gonna say, hey Cameron, man, thank you for writing that five-thousand-dollar check, but dude, you wrote it? Because your friend was sitting next to you at that fundraiser, at that circle table, and you got some cheap old piece of nasty chicken that you paid a hundred bucks for? And, and, and you only wrote the check to the orphanage, cuz you knew your friend was looking over your shoulder and you didn't want him to outdo you. So Cameron, thanks for writing the five-thousand-dollar check. You don't get any reward for it. You don't get any reward for it, I'm, it's burned up. Your motive was sinful. It was envious, it was prideful, it was selfish. Wisdom of the world. Wisdom of your flesh. Hey Cameron, do you remember that day that? You stopped. And you just talked to that homeless guy and you asked him what his name was and you actually shook his hand? Pre-COVID, uh, you shook his hand and you bought him lunch? And like, uh, our friend Rebecca, you actually sat at the same table with him for an hour with your kids there and you discussed life? Do you know that that put a deposit of hope in that guy and he didn't go commit suicide? And he actually did get himself cleaned up and blah, 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 do you know you changed that guy's life from that simple act? See, there's wisdom. That we're gonna be held accountable for. And there's wisdom that we're just buying hook, line and sinker. We're buying this wisdom of the world, we're buying wisdom on how to solve racial divide from the world. We're buying wisdom on civilian versus cops from the world, we're, we're buying. We are searching the world's wisdom on how to solve. These problems. There is a demon spirit. There is a giant demonic force. That is stirring this pot. In America. And God is saying, until you start praying to me. And it's still, till you start getting your wisdom from me and your understanding from me, Cameron. You're gonna keep repeating the same patterns. You won't get any further in your walk with me, you won't mature, you'll actually de, uh, what's the opposite of? You'll be immature, you'll dechur, demature, I don't know, you'll go down. But if you'll get into my wisdom. Oh, my wisdom will transcend. Hollywood's wisdom. And those movies will not be attractive, you'll actually be disgusted. And you won't be sad when you turn it off, you'll be glad because you're not buying the wisdom of the world. That song won't move you anymore. Cause you'll go. What? Why was I singing that? Why was I singing that song? The wisdom of the world versus the wisdom of God. James says, listen. Put your money where your mouth is. Don't just tell me you love Jesus and don't do anything about it. Don't. Oh, I think I could go, listen. Just follow the Lord. We're all in this together. There's days where I do and days I don't. There's times I do and times I don't. The good thing in the mature walk with the Lord is, is the more we walk with the Lord, the further apart. Do our good days versus bad days, do our trials. Where we win versus lose. We grow in maturity. God's growing you up in the Lord. God's saying, what are you watching? What are you hearing, where are you getting your wisdom, are you getting your wisdom from those? Juicy novels, are you getting your wisdom, Cameron, from the magazines on the rack at the checkout stand? Cause if that's where you're getting your wisdom about so-and-so's marriage and so-and-so's horoscope, if you're getting your wisdom from that. If all of your wisdom is coming from eight hours a day on Facebook. Then you're just staying on this level. And I want you to go to this next level, listen, God's taking you to a higher level in him. You look different than you looked five years ago, you act different than you did, you, you sound different. God's taking you to a newer level of wisdom and maturity in him. And God, and we'll see it, we'll all see it. Because the fruit, the action that we produce. When my heart is producing love. My mind will think love, my words will be love, my actions will be love. But when my heart has bitterness in it. And anger and unforgiveness, my mind will produce bitter anger, unforgiving thoughts. If my heart's got perversion in it, lust. And greed, my mind's gonna produce lust and greed. And my words are gonna be lust and greed and my actions will follow. God's changing you, God's taking you to a next level. I'm super excited about where God's taking us. Tune in this Sunday, eleven AM, White Stone Church, TX.com. Powerful message. About the kingdom and the media. It's gonna be along these similar lines, so you may hear a lot of stuff twice, but it's powerful. Because God is giving us the ability to choose. Where do we get our information from, where do we get our wisdom from? God bless you, thank you for coming, we'll see you Tuesday, same place, six thirty, we'll be in John, uh, James, chapter four. God bless you, bye.